Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter bi-weekly report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
The meeting of the Exeter Planning Board, Thursday, September 11th, 2025. We'll start with introductions. My name is Aaron Brown. I'm the vice chair. I'm acting this evening as our typical chairperson. Lang Plummer is absent this evening, and I'll start with my far right.
Marty Kennedy.
John Verda, clerk.
Sam LaCloud.
Gwen English.
Nancy Belanger, Select Board Representative.
Carol Ogilvy, interim Town Planner.
Great. Thank you. We're going to start our agenda with discussion and hopeful approval of some minutes, and I'll let Nancy lead the charge on this.
Well, so the first thing I'm going to do is motion to table the July 12th, 2025 meeting minutes.
June.
To, no, July, what did I say? Different, yeah, it's July 12th.
June also July 12.
2025 meeting minute. It's June?
It's June.
Well, we, okay, sorry, my apologies. I'm gonna withdraw that and try this again.
It's also July. I have it in the package.
It is, I know. So I'm going to move that we table the June 12th, 2025 meeting minutes to our next meeting of September 25th, 2025.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Do you have another one?
Well, we have two. Do you want me to start with what I have?
Yes.
For notes on them? So, Mr. Chair, would you like me to start with August 14th?
That'd be great.
Okay. I don't know how many I actually have, but 14. I have, sorry, they're in another file here. I have too many files. Okay. So for August 14th, 2025, I have a few. So line 24, library building, fund maintenance should be between building and fund. Library, line 26, library director Julia, not Judy. Also at the end of that line, to establish a building maintenance fund, maintenance needs to be added. And that needs to be changed to A. Line 31, Ms. Roy noted, these are not part of the town. Has to be added, town, at the end of that line. Line 55, Parks Recreation needs to be removed. It's Parks Improvement Fund. Line 66, at the end of that line, it needs to say, the path leading to the entrance, Line 87, supervisor needs to say Superintendent Stephen Dalton. Line 107, High Street Cross Country, not City. So City needs to be changed to Country. The line was, that's line 107. And those are the only several changes that I have for that. Yes, that's it for me.
On line 34, this is Marty Kennedy's comment. It might be better to put, Mr. Kennedy asked about, add about the process. I didn't have anything else.
Anything, Sam?
No.
I do want to, I did mean to state that Marty and Sam will be acting members this evening. With that being said, your motion.
I move to accept the August 14th, 2025 meeting minutes as amended.
Well, second?
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stained? Motion passes. One more.
One more. August 20th, 2025 meeting minutes. Line 24, interim Town Manager Melissa is spelled M-E-L-I-S-S-A. On line 79, Jeff Gilbert noted he was, it should say, a retired attorney. Line 139, toward the end of it, parking is missing a G at the end. Line 148, he conferred with the Town Water, it says it has an S instead of a W, but Town should be there, the Town Water and Source Superintendent. And that's all I have.
Line 73 should be related, not relate. Let's see. I got that one, 137. You got the parking one on 137.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. All right. This is a comment that I made, line 153. Just to make it a little bit easier to understand, after the word questioned, add what would happen? Okay, that one's okay. I think that's it.
Did you miss that one?
Yep.
No, you were there.
Oh. That was the last meeting.
You good?
I'm good.
You good, Sam? I think we're good on this one.
I move to accept the August 20th, 2025 meeting minutes as amended.
I second.
There you go. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stained? Motion passes. That's it for the minutes. For this evening. Okay, next on our agenda, we're going to open up a case, the Continued Public Hearing on the Application of Cali Associates for Site Plan Review and Assure Land Condition Use Permit for the Proposed Redevelopment of the Property at 97 Portsmouth Avenue. The developer is proposing to demolish the existing Blue Ribbon Dry Cleaners Building on the site, and construct a multi-use building to include commercial space, amenities, and 14 residential units with parking and associated site improvements. The property is located in the C2 Highway Commercial Zoning District and is identified as Tax Map Parcel Number 65-125, Planning Board Case Number 25-3. So we're opening that hearing. Is there someone who would like to speak on behalf of the developer? Get us going tonight?
Good evening. I'm Josh Lenzetta. I'm the attorney at Bruton &amp; Brube. I'm here for Cali and Associates. To my right is John Lorden. He is here from Beals &amp; Associates in place of Christian. Christian apologizes for not being here this evening. He unfortunately injured his knee and is scheduled for surgery, so John is kindly joining us tonight. John did a lot of the design work at Beals, and so he's very familiar with plans if you have any engineering questions. So we met a couple weeks ago. I think we went through the application substantively. I know John's office submitted an updated plan illustrating trees that Ms. English, I think, spoke about. Comments from Underwood came back as there are none, so there's really no, there are no extra comments, I think, that we need to address as far as from an engineering perspective. Hopefully everyone had time to, we did resend the easement zipper that we had sent a couple of months ago, so hopefully everyone had a minute to look through that. I know it was probably riveting reading, but, so that was the whole chain of title related to the easements, and you know, you could see the inception of it.
You're using a microphone.
Sorry, I'm trying to. So, you know, we, again, resubmitted the easements for your review. I don't think anything has really changed from our perspective on our position on those. We are here asking that you approve of the application this evening. And I would like to note, from the last meeting, we did change the seat count, which reduced certain parameters or elements of the parking that was, I think, in question from the abutters. And the application fully complies with the underlying zone and the MUND and the town's site plan regulations and zoning ordinance. So we are now in full compliance. Still asking for the waiver for the pedestrian way, or the size of it, only because we're trying to match the existing sidewalk, instead of going with the eight feet, only to match what's there now. So we're happy to answer any other questions, but that's all I have.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Absolutely.
Can you bring the mic a little closer?
Sorry.
Because it does help people.
Sure, sorry. I felt like I was eating it there. I thought it was close enough, but I'll try a little harder. Sorry about that.
Everybody senses it. Thank you.
Does the board have any questions for the applicant at this time? Not going to put you all on the spot, but I'm going to just generally ask you that.
I think some of the stuff, forget where we left off, but the space between your proposed building and the bank, have we worked everything out there? I mean, as I recall, I mean, we have people that go into the parking lot in the back that have to go around the bank building, because that road between the two buildings is the exit for the, the
Right.
drive-up window of the bank, so.
The proposal for ingress and egress is that the residents and potentially customers of the commercial space below would enter the now Blue Ribbon Lot and exit on the Blue Ribbon Lot. So as proposed, we're entering and exiting on the actual subject property. The way the traffic lane flows now is that you would go around Bank Prov
Right.
and then come back down and around and back onto the Blue Ribbon, which is how Bank Prov's traffic flow is set up. So we're not proposing anything different than what is currently there. There are other means of, as we've talked about, from the access easements, there are other ways to drive onto and off of the property. So you could drive from the Margaritas Lot, generally across Bank Prov and onto the Blue Ribbon Lot. You could drive from McLean Manor property, on and off, and after getting an email from the owner of the Blue Ribbon now, it's pretty clear that people are using those means as a way to access the property, and they've been doing that for multiple decades, or like 40 years since he's owned it. So, but as we're proposing it, we would like to enter and exit on the Blue Ribbon Lot and go around the back of the bank.
Well, you can do that, but then, but you still have to drive through the bank's property. I know you have an easement, but it's just a little strange. And right now, you know, there's probably one or two cars at the most in front of the, in the front parking lot, in front of the dry cleaner. And now you're proposing to make it all in the back, so they have no choice but to drive around.
Well, there would be, the residents would generally park in the rear, but
Right.
the, the commercial use, or, you know, any invitees on the property would be using the front property. But similarly, the bank has to use the Blue Ribbon property to exit. So it's somewhat of a symbiotic relationship between the two properties. Because their traffic flow is directly, their drive-through, and then the egress to get out of that drive-through is directed around the back of the bank, and then back onto the Blue Ribbon property to get back out to Portsmouth Ave. And I, there could be, you know, there is a quick duck-out from the side of the bank into Margaritas, as is another quick duck-out. They could go right across Blue Ribbon and into the Manor if they really wanted to. So there's multiple things going on there, but there isn't really any extra burden, in my opinion. You know, we're entering on property that is owned by the Blue Ribbon, and we're exiting on property that's owned by the Blue Ribbon. The bank is entering on, you know, the Blue Ribbon property, and then going around onto their property, and then coming back out, right? So it's working, it's kind of cutting both ways. And we're not proposing to change that traffic flow. And the bank's traffic flow really is between nine and five anyways.
You're not going to change the traffic flow, but you're going to add to the traffic?
Yes.
Which makes a little bit of a difference.
There will be people living on the property, but, you know, if everyone, most people work, I mean, you're in and out at some point on a work day, right? And then however else you're accessing your property, I just don't think that it's an enormous extra amount of traffic in and out. It's certainly not unreasonable, given what's happening there, and the way the properties have been utilized over 60-plus years. In my opinion.
I have, are you able to put anything up on the screen, or?
We have plans.
I just think it helps the audience, certainly, in a discussion like that, you can be pointing to, visuals help.
Sure.
Especially if you have them.
I was figuring that we'd already been through a lot of that.
We have.
Didn't plan to
Yeah, you don't need to do a presentation.
Go back through everything again, yeah.
Yeah, we don't need to rehash everything, but if you throw it up there, and someone from the public or somebody else has a comment, I think it helps. Certainly helps me. So we did get a couple letters as well. I guess I will bring one of those up, since I see somebody in the audience who could probably bring it up. I assume everybody got a chance to read the letter from DTC?
Oh, yeah.
And up there.
So
I have unfortunately not seen
You have not gotten that?
The letter from DTC.
Oh, you have not. Think I have an extra copy here. I'll give you.
I really won't be able to deal with it right now anyways, but
Well, you should have it.
It's pretty, yeah.
You were CC'd on it. You didn't get it?
It's two.
I came straight from a pretty long day.
Well, yeah, we got it.
Didn't come today, but that's all right. Mr. Hilsen, can I ask you to go briefly summarize your letter?
Yeah, I have, I have some additional comments as well, but
Okay.
I can run through it as quickly as I can.
Sure.
Clearly have a room full of youngsters here who
I'm sure they're riveted.
With respect to the letter that you referenced, all right? Overarching, the more I look at the title to these three lots, Bank Prov, Blue Ribbon, and McLean Manor, the more problems that this application has. There is no easement for ingress or egress over the McLean Manor benefiting the Blue Ribbon Lot. That's one problem here. So you're not, at least on record, on title, there's no easement coming in here, so you need to the back. We all know this building is too big. Well, it's big. It dominates this narrow lot, so the question is, how are you going to get to the back? There's no easement over McLean Manor going here. And I spoke to Gary DeDario, the counsel for McLean Manor, today, just to make sure I wasn't seeing something that wasn't there. He confirmed, yes, I've done the title review as well. There's no easement. When the D'Agostino's subdivided this McLean Manor Lot off in 1971, they didn't reserve for themselves an access easement to benefit this property, the Blue Ribbon property. That's one issue here. So now, what we're looking at, to access the rear of this lot, you have to go around the Bank Prov Lot into here. That synopsizes that particular easement issue. The other synopsis for my letter, which is a little bit disconnected from what I wanted to kind of talk about tonight, we shouldn't forget that REL Commons, my client, which I've been calling the Margarita Plaza, has an easement over Blue Ribbon's Lot. That easement, that area will be entirely consumed. Look at this, almost every square inch of this lot is being consumed by this proposal. It's a MUND project. They're providing 20 spaces now. They have reduced their parking, so they can at least meet the minimum parking spaces on-site. But I think everybody, well, most people in this room, I know we have some Girl Scouts here, know that, and that's not a slight on Girl Scouts or anything, but everybody knows for 14 residential units and the commercial use, you're gonna, you're gonna need more than 20 spots. It's going to push this off-site. What I wanted to talk about, and I'll do it so I can sit down and just, get this all out, I guess, let's put it that way. What I looked at, and what I think is important to understand, is the nature of the easements across the Bank Prov Lot. Because my firm, as I mentioned, did the permitting for this lot, we have the title in our service. Here's the problem with this, and I'll spit it out as quickly as I can. Obviously, D'Agostino owned all, this was all one lot. These three lots were one lot. In 1964, they subdivided, Ben D'Agostino deeded this lot to his wife. I guess that's how they did subdivisions back then. And they immediately leased this property, Bank Prov, to a restaurant. I think it was Roars back then. It's the predecessor to the KFC, right? Approximately at the same time, they leased the Blue Ribbon Lot to the Blue Ribbon Cleaners. The D'Agostino deed, just so I can read it in the record, is Book 1743, page 174. The manx lease, which leased the Bank Prov Lot, is at 1743-166. And then the field steal, I'm sorry, the dry cleaner lot, or lease, is 1879, Book 110. Why am I belaboring this? I promise I'm gonna get to the point. There is an easement on record, and I think it's part of the title packet that you've been, you've been given. It was granted not by D'Agostino, who owned the fee to the Bank Prov Lot. It was granted by the tenant of that lot. And I think we all know tenants can't grant easements, okay? I think at best, maybe they used the wrong language, and they were talking about a license in that, because that does say, that lease does say, hey, Blue Ribbon has the right to pass around the back of the building, which was approximately in the same location back then. The lease did say that, and the lease was assigned several times. But importantly, it was expressly terminated at Book 5817, page 266. And that is part of the title that's been provided to you by the applicant. That lease, which is the only record of providing a right to access over this Bank Prov Lot, has been terminated expressly in the deeds. And when this lot was subdivided off, this lot, Blue Ribbon, did not retain any rights to pass over this lot. They clearly, in fairness to Attorney Lance and the applicant, they clearly have been using it like that for many years, despite the express termination. But what I'm trying to illustrate to you is, every time I peel back another layer of the onion associated with where and how and what legal rights the various parties have to access this lot, it gets worse for this particular project. And so, like I said, my REL respectfully objects to this current configuration. We'd like to see this lot developed. This is too much, and it's going to ultimately force parking off-site. We would like to see it developed in a reasonable manner, such that that lot can be used at its highest and best use. So there's another issue here, and I'll mention it very, very briefly, and then I'll sit down, I promise. And that is, there is the reciprocal easement that we talked about at great length last time, right? In favor of this lot, it's of record, and it's reciprocal in favor of my client's lot, the Margaritas thing. The D'Agostinos locked off the Bank Prov Lot. The easement in question, you have this language in the letter, talks about, it's an adjoining, it's the adjoining property. This lot is no longer adjoining. adjoining the Margaritas lot anymore. So does that easement still exist? That's highly in question. Even if it does, I submit to you that I think it's abandoned, because they didn't retain any access easement over here. You can abandon an easement if you take an affirmative step as the dominant estate to abandon that easement. This is the dominant estate. The Blue Ribbon lot is the dominant estate. And what they did is they subdivided this off without reserving a right to access the rear of their lot. That is an affirmative abandonment of that reciprocal easement. And so I wanted to get that into the record. Thank you for your patience. I think that's probably beyond what you were asking.
That's okay. I asked you.
To comment on. So, thank you.
There was another letter as well, from another attorney law firm representing the Bank Prov. Do you want to come up?
So, good morning or good evening. Tim Sullivan. I have been asked to step in and pinch-hit for my partner, Todd Fahey. I'm gonna start by just using a standard lawyer trick, which is, we agree with what he said. So I think Attorney Hilsen has summed up our position pretty well, and I'm not gonna stand here and sort of rehash it. But I think in, sure, I guess the first thing I'd like to put on the record is Attorney Fahey did ask me to request a continuance for tonight's hearing. He would like to be here. He'd like to address the board. He'd also like to have his client here, who was not able to be here. And I think this is important, because, as Mr. Gruder pointed out, I think the first question you asked the applicant was, has this been worked out? And I think the answer that you heard was no, right? And I think the answer you've continued to hear from Attorney Hilsen is, there's a lot of issues here that still need to be resolved, and we're not there yet. And so certainly, Attorney Fahey has submitted a number of letters and raises the individual concerns that he has. But one thing that I just wanted to briefly touch on, because I saw this when I was reviewing the materials, in response to the Underwood Engineers letter, August 26, 2025, I don't know if the board has a copy of that letter, but under Paragraph 39, with regards to the parking, the comment was actively discussing this with the planning board. I don't know what that means. I don't know what actively discussing is, and I don't know what is being proposed to this board. We still haven't really heard anything different, other than what's previously been proposed, as I understand it. So the town's third-party engineers raised concerns. I don't see those concerns as having been resolved. So we're still here, making the same objections that we've been making up to this point. Similar to Attorney Hilsen's client, the bank would like to be a good neighbor, would like to work with this project, to see it succeed. But those efforts by the bank have been met with silence by the applicant. So we're still here, making the same objection.
All right, before you sit down?
Yes, sir.
And I meant to ask Attorney Hilsen this, too. You did both ask for a continuance. I've never seen that request, especially when you have legal representation at the hearing that's been scheduled. You've been to hearings before on this specific case. Both of your clients have been at hearings for this specific case. What's gonna change?
Well, at least for our clients, Attorney Fahey is well more versed than this. I'm just pinch-hitting tonight. I'm only here because I happen to live the closest to Exeter, quite frankly.
Sure.
So I think he would like to be able to substantively address these issues. And again, this has been an ongoing development, as I can understand it. And there's been changes. There's been new information that's been submitted, and he hasn't had an opportunity to...
So your objection's gonna change?
Well, I...
To an, to an okay?
It's certainly not gonna, the basic objection is not going to change, as of what we've seen at this point. That's correct.
Yeah, so, as they say, in my opinion, the show must go on. I think it's really dangerous to start continuing hearings at the benefit of abutters when they already have representation and you're in the middle, towards the end of a hearing. I appreciate and respect both of your requests on the behalf of your clients. I'm not convinced that I was gonna hear anything new if they were here, if you know what I mean.
Understood.
So I appreciate the request. I think we should keep going. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Do folks have anything you want to address to the attorneys of the abutters at this stage specifically?
Not of the abutters, no.
Well, they're up.
Excuse me?
Queued up. In a second. In a second.
Okay.
Anything?
Not, not yet.
Okay. All right, so we're just gonna bring him back to the board for one second. You're gonna get your chance. Do you guys want to talk about the easement at all as a board for a second, before we hear more testimony? Or are you not ready to do that?
I, I can put a few thoughts out there, but I'm not ready to vote on it.
We're not voting.
Okay, but I'm making it clear. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
I have serious concerns about the McLean Manor. That's a parking lot. They can come in and they can go around, but I don't see that that was meant to be a roadway through McLean Manor. I also, that, that's a big, big issue for me, McLean Manor. That, that is clearly a tenant, the parking lot. It's, it's not a throughway. It can be from McLean Manor, the people that live there, but I don't see people from Portsmouth Ave accessing, going into that parking lot to go around the backs of those buildings. I also really wish this easement issue was addressed and cleared up before they came here.
Yeah.
I think that is a problem.
Yeah, absolutely. Anything, anyone add to that at all?
Well, I'm going back to the comment I made at the last meeting, which is, also ties in with what Nancy just said. If McLean Manor wishes to fully prevent cars from going through this new lot, this new development into their property, they could certainly put up some kind of a fence. And that changes everything. And that's an unknown. They may not do that, but it's something that's within their rights. And now we've know that it is, having heard Attorney Hilsen bring that topic up. So it affects the parking. It affects the circulation within that lot, which they are depending on for the number of parking spaces that they need for this particular project. So that's a concern. And that, at the last meeting, it was some of the abutters who live in the Manors nodded when I said that they could put up a, some kind of a fence or some kind of a barrier. But I don't know that it was legally addressed at that point by other attorneys, saying that, yes, that is indeed the case. So...
We're getting conflicting legal opinions.
Yeah, we are. I know we are. And that's a problem.
As to the rights of the easement holders and those being encumbered by the easements, the applicant, you know, subject property, and essentially the rest of what's around it, that they would be utilizing or continuing to utilize. I think by what's happened there in the past, it seems like there has been use across the subject property, across all the other properties.
Yeah.
This would be a much more intense use than it's seen in probably ever, really, I would say. But...
Yeah, I mean...
Does bring up a legal question.
I can't vote in favor yet, because they, I don't think the parties have resolved this issue to everyone's satisfaction. They're not even close.
And we're not...
And we're just gonna create headaches for ourselves, you know?
Do you have anything, Stan? Do you have anything?
Yeah. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I am still troubled with the differing opinions on the easements. I'm just not qualified or educated enough to parse that out for myself.
Sure. I think that's beyond most planning boards.
If I could address a couple of the comments...
In a second. I just want to get, I'm polling the board at the moment. Are you, did you say your piece at this point?
Yeah, I'm also. I hear better answers.
I'm talking about the easement. You don't have to...
Yeah, I guess the, the only thing I would say is, based on everything that I've heard so far to this point, I'm still not convinced that you're not having, your parking has not been addressed, and you're, you're impacting the abutting properties. And it doesn't seem like you've done anything to address that. That's all, that's all I feel.
Okay.
I agree.
I'm gonna hear from the abutter that wanted to get up, sir.
Yeah, just a couple.
Yes. You gotta go up to the mic, introduce yourself. There's a whole process. It's mostly for the record.
Right.
So you just have to state your name and your...
Yeah, my name is Michael Siegel. I'm on the Board of Directors of McLean. First of all, I want to state, I'm one of that, Attorney Hilsen's, is absolutely correct. There is, the McLean was, is not part of the, there was no easement for the Blue Ribbons to go through or use any of our property. So when I have something, I would like to leave with the board to get a chance to look at it. Attorney asked me to drop it up. He couldn't make it today. So, the other, the other thing is that, if you've been over there, you know that we have a, right now, we have, there's 18 one-bedrooms and there's 18 two-bedrooms, okay? Now, and a lot of the one-bedrooms have two cars, okay? So if you've been over there, you can see that even now, that our, our parking situation is very, very crowded. So I just can't see how they could put that number of units there and have, you know, have the proper parking in there that they would need. So that's basically what I would, what I have to say. The rest of it's in there. The, we could put up a barrier, yes, if we wanted to. We could put up a Jersey barrier to stop anybody from coming in. We do have children in there, and we wouldn't want to have this kind of traffic with children walking around in the parking lot. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, too. And basically, if you have any questions, I'm here.
You'd probably have to put in a gate that the fire department could access.
Oh, yeah, right. Yes, we would. Yeah. We could put something in anyways.
Don't build a smat wall yet.
Yeah. But I'm just saying that right now, even, we just finished putting, putting a new roof on there, just to get the people in Building One to move. It just took all the parking spaces.
Yeah.
So it's, it really is essential that you think about how many, how many units they're gonna put in. Because if you have, if you put in a one-bedroom, and there's two people in there, they're gonna have two cars. There's no question about it. You can't stop them. Unless you put it in the condo docks, they can only have one car, I guess. So that's about what I have to say. Anybody want to ask me anything? Nope. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public want to speak on this matter? I'm gonna bring it back to the applicant.
Great, thank you. I appreciate all the comments, and we are listening. Regarding collaboration with the abutters, I think there have been some misrepresentations made about what efforts have actually been made by Mr. Calley, trying to speak with the owners of the Margaritas Plaza, and also with Bank Prov. We did reach out to the folks at REL, and I spoke with Chris multiple times and asked for a meeting. We've been asking for a meeting with that group for months, really since before, or maybe since the original ZBA hearing, which is unrelated to this at this point. We were denied that meeting exclusively. And that was not because Chris was not making an effort to communicate our request. So it's, it's no commentary on Mr. Hilsen in any way. I respect Chris a lot, and I agree with most of his opinion about the title. In fact, I gave him the same title research that I gave the board. But we do disagree about the result of that research. I'll get to that in a second. But we, we did reach out over and over again, attempting to speak to Mr. Gilbert and folks at REL. And Mr. Gilbert, at the last hearing, said that we never reached out, and that in fact, it was opposite. And that just, quite simply, is not true. Regarding Bank Prov, we also reached out to Bank Prov, and I wasn't involved with the first couple of meetings with this board. And I got more involved after, or towards that meeting with Bank Prov. We did sit down with the folks at Bank Prov, and we had a pretty unproductive meeting, to be quite honest with you. I'm at one of these hearings for the last 20 years, almost every night of the week. And I do a lot of this. And when I sit down in a conference room and I'm told, the first thing out of the other attorney's mouth is, we have our position, and we are not going to concede one thing, that meeting doesn't go very well, even with a nice guy like me. So I, we did try, we went on a site walk with the principals of Bank Prov. We walked with Mr. Calley out and around the property. The teardrop feature that does encroach, that was part of that letter from Todd, was something that was, it's my understanding, Jeff, it's only that the bank requested of Jeff, because it would improve the aesthetics of the property. We can certainly leave that as lines. We don't have to do that. It's, there's no requirement for that. We can keep everything on the property. Jeff was trying to earnestly work with them and facilitate and accept a request that they had of him. The reason that we haven't been able to go further is that the conversations are wholly unproductive, because we disagree about the scope of these easements. And there, you know, I have been saying, yeah, there should be an access and an disagreement possibly between these parties, but that's a private matter, and it doesn't, or should not affect, even though I understand the concern, it should not affect the decision of this board, in my opinion. And the reason that I say that is that with the reduced seat count, and Mr. Kennedy, I do understand what you're saying, but I, I am struggling, because we did specifically reduce the seat count at the last meeting, on motion, on my motion. And that fully brings this application into 100% compliance with the underlying ordinance, which is the burden of the applicant. So what's tabled this evening is a fully compliant application, in my opinion. So I just wanted to address that, because I, I'm getting the feeling that maybe the word on the streets is that we're trying to not communicate with our abutters, and that just simply isn't true. So I want to clear the air, if possible. Regarding the easements, I've submitted the whole chain of title to the board. And that includes, and I think Chris did a great job, explaining the original parcel and how that changed over a certain period of time. However, the easement is restored. So there was an extinguishment, and there is also a restoration. And so that's in the packet that I gave you, and it is crystal clear. It can be found at 2970 over 1211 at the Registry of Deeds. It's in your packet. Easement's restored. So I don't understand where, you know, how the abandonment argument is coming in here. Regarding McLean Manor, there is not an easement. And if you notice at the last hearing, I didn't answer that question. There is no, there was some confusion, I think, with our surveyor initially doing the existing conditions plan, because I think the chain of title is somewhat confusing. There is not, we acknowledge, an easement recorded at the registry from McLean Manor onto the Blue Ribbon property. However, we have spoken with the owner of the Blue Ribbon, who's owned this property for quite some time, and there is full utilization of the access point on the back of the property, between those two highlighted marks where it's hashed in gray. So the residents of McLean Manor are frequently, daily, driving over the Blue Ribbon property. And that has been a condition there for decades. So there's clearly a prescriptive right. Is that something that we would have analyzed here? No, that's something to analyze at court, and it's just never been an issue between these property owners until now. And there is a change, and I acknowledge that. But again, not only would the prescriptive right be granted, in my opinion, but it's been like this for decades. And we're not proposing that the residents or the commercial users of this property enter or exit the property from the Blue Ribbon, or, I'm sorry, from McLean Manor. The residents and the commercial users can enter and exit on the host parcels property from Portsmouth Avenue. We already have a curb cut. We're not changing that. We're not proposing to change the flow of traffic on the interior of the property, nor are we proposing to change the flow of traffic on Portsmouth Avenue. We've, people have bandied about safety as an issue for pedestrians. However, we have connected sidewalks from the proposed new structure, which sits in the exact same locus as... the exact same locus as the existing building. We've connected those sidewalks to Portsmouth Avenue, which is, and not only is it more than reasonable, it's what an engineering standard would require. So we've connected safely pedestrians to the rest of Exeter essentially by doing that on the interior of the Blue Ribbon property. And we have been able to re-engineer and redesign the property to hold all of the cars. I don't think the conjecture is worth, you know, we can talk about, you know, everybody knows that there's going to be some extra impact, but we're, what we're actually talking about is complying with the ordinance and that's what we are doing here. So you can't say everybody knows. And you also can't say that when we're designing by the town's request essentially, from changes to the zoning ordinance and site plan regulations over time, and especially in the last 10 years, the town is looking for smaller residential housing and that's part of the mund and that's what we're proposing. So we are proposing one car because these are small apartments that we're trying to put out there as a product for the residents of Exeter at the town's request because of the changes to the zoning ordinance. So it's really difficult to kind of listen to, you know, we have an applicant who in good faith is trying to develop this property with what I think is a really cool design in the same exact location as the building is there. The traffic flow doesn't change on the interior of the property. We can, the attorneys can all argue and that's what they do. Attorneys try to convince people of stuff, right? And we're arguing, but the chain of title isn't that difficult when you hit that restoration. The access is there and we are the dominant estate here. And when I hear, you know, that, oh, you know, there could be some impact from Margaritas and parking and it's too maxed out, the easements were created for the benefit of these small pieces of property. That's how they were subdivided and that's how they were able to do this. It's why they exist. And in the conversations that we've had with the abutters, everything seems to be leveraged. So sure, they're happy to come and talk in favor of our project if we relinquish all of our rights to parking and to access on their property. That's just not a way that this should be done, especially when this property needs that ingress knee dress for a multitude of reasons, whether it's for the residents, whether it's for the commercial users, whether it's for fire safety, if there is a knock gate put up somewhere, fine. But there's just simply no reason to extinguish those to try to come manipulate or have better optics here at the planning board. So I think the chain of title isn't that difficult. We provided it months ago. I object to the continuance requests from abutters, Mr. Chair. I agree, that's an unusual tactic. We've been here. There are no new objections. There's no new information. The chain of title has been with the board for months at this point. So, you know, I don't have a lot of new information. We're happy to remove the teardrops. We were doing that at the request of the bank and now they're saying that they don't want it. It's not a problem. We did make the changes requested with, to reflect the correct trees. Correct me if I'm wrong, John, but I don't think that anything came back from underway.
That's correct.
So we did address all of the comments and I appreciate pinch hitting. I used to have to go do that when I worked at a big law firm in the city, but when you go pinch hit, you have to be ready to actually hit the ball. So we're here and we're talking about it today. So that's all I have, but we fully comply and I think that that is a really good thing. We're trying to comply. Jeff is trying to do, to create a very cool design that works on this property, that pushes the mund forward. And I do think this is a walkable area. The hospital is only a couple of blocks away. There are a ton of people there every day and Portsmouth Avenue could use more places like this and that's why it's in the mund. So that's my rebuttal for what I've heard, but to me, the easements are clear. There's clearly a prescriptive right and I think it's a private matter that needs to get settled outside of the purview of this board, but it shouldn't have a bearing on an application that's proposing ingress knee dress on its own property and that satisfies fully the parking requirements of the ordinance.
I think we all probably agree that, you know, we want the housing. It's, that's what's in front and back of it and how your tenants get to those parking spots.
I understand.
And we've got three different opinions on whether you can or can't do it or what easement you have or what easement you don't have. And this isn't a, we're not judges up here, so I mean, I don't, I'm not comfortable with it, but I said this last time, if you didn't have to try to do a coffee shop in the front, you could make that all parking and probably it would go a long way to solving the problem.
So the removal of the exterior, so, and I think the concept there is that, when I've talked to Jeff, and I've talked to Jeff on a weekly basis for four months now about this project and the different kind of manifestations at this point that we went through, but the idea is that there are residents living there and that the coffee shop, specifically the exterior space, is also an amenity for those residents and that's why we've been trying to do that because it's more in line with the mund than not. And we've got enough parking to fit everyone. So I think that that's where, and then we do, in my opinion, have this easement where there is an enormous lot that has a different, and I think that what I've heard from.
There's no problem with that building now with the parking, right? Because it's all out front.
No.
Basically.
No, there's still parking in the back.
Well, employees may park there, but the customers, your retail customers are parking in front of the building.
Yeah, I'm not sure about exactly what they're doing there.
That's what they're doing. The doors in the front, I'm sure that's what they're going.
I mean, it's a different, it's a, it's a different, I mean, I, we, that's why we here is, like, I acknowledge that this is a very different use than what's there and what has historically been there, but I also would postulate or assert that it's an, it's a much better use of this property in this particular location in town. And it's, again, it's in line and these easements could be argued and quite frankly, most of the arguments I've heard about these easements are fully moot because none of the problem has happened yet, meaning we're not going to court about this because there's not an issue yet. And that's where it's outside the bounds of this to say, well, it sounds like you guys don't agree about, it does kind of sound like we don't agree with the easement, but Bank Prov has one foot out the door. They're under agreement. They're being bought by another bank. We're probably not even talking to the right people at this point. We have no idea when that's closing or what's happening there. There's a ton of parking on the back of the Bank Prov lot. You can see that enormous island. That's just mulch. So complaining about parking and then having an enormous traffic island in the way and then saying, "I don't have enough parking," is a bit crazy. And I, you know, a lot of the issues that could come up are theoretic and have not happened yet. They're moot. So the parties would be left to deal with this on their own in court, but it should have no bearing on the application that fully complies with the order. The job of the applicant is to come here and comply with your ordinance to the best of their ability. And usually, most of the applications that I work on that are really big have a lot of different special permits. This does not. This is literally in fully, it complies to the letter of your ordinance and so I'm not understanding how the easement, I understand that there's a difference, but the traffic pattern is exactly the same. And when thinking about the bank's traffic flow, you're dealing with a drive-through that's only in use for a portion of the day. Eight hours out of 24 is a pretty small percentage.
The, you added seven parking spots out front, right? Was that it?
Uh, yes.
But we, and we've kind of brushed off that there's going to be retail on the first floor, too, right?
It's proposed as a commercial space for the coffee shop, though.
No, no. The coffee shop's there? I thought the coffee shop was out in front.
It's, it's part and parcel, from what I understand. Jeff, can you clarify? No, it's both, right?
Well, wait a minute. That's two separate things, right? The front is a kiosk for coffee, possibly retail.
And the interior is the same.
Was a restaurant that you were saying that you were going to reduce the capacity?
Yes, but it's a coffee shop, is what we've been talking about.
A coffee shop or a restaurant or both?
Are they different?
Are you saying the coffee shop's in the building now and that they're?
We've been talking about having.
The thing out front is just a place to sit.
So that there's an outdoor, if you've been to Portsmouth, to Laney and Lou in the West End Yards, that's conceptually, I think, been the concept of what we've been doing, of what we've been talking about, how that comes out in the project, you know, would be part of the design and the building permit. But yes, the restaurant was supposed to be or slated as a coffee shop. And so when I think restaurant, I'm sorry, I think sit-down restaurant, but we're talking about a facility that serves coffee.
And food.
Pastries, food, sure.
Coffee shop usually is bagels and things. And you said also at the sidewalk that that might be an office, too, instead of a coffee shop, right?
Well, it could theoretically be if there's some change with the operator.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
So presume, let's presume that all the residents decide to stay home for the day and you've got.
And drink coffee.
You were asked to have one parking spot. I know that's in our regs and you've done that. But you have an enterprise on the first floor that needs employees and will have people from off-site coming who don't live in this, in this unit. That to me says that those people are now going to be parking elsewhere. And I know, I heard what you said about safety. You've provided sidewalks, safe access to Portsmouth Avenue, but I think human nature's going to take the most, a person's going to take the most direct route from wherever they've parked their car. So if they're parked at Margarita's, they're going to be cutting across those accessways to the bank or whatever. I'm sure it will be, continue to be a bank, I presume. But, but it seems that, it seems that there is still going to be a shortfall of parking because of the commercial aspect downstairs. Correct me if I'm wrong. I'm seeing, it doesn't quite, and I know we have, like, for example, the Squam Scott Building in Exeter, that was, that was designed to try to get people who are coming into town and want to shop, want to use the bank, they could park, you know, they could park there, run in and do what they need to do and leave. And they're using the parking spots that are allotted to the residents of that building. So it's shared parking, but I don't know, I, I'm troubled by this.
I hear what you're saying and I think the issue is that, I can't predict human nature.
No, you can't.
It's not, I can't do that. No one can. I understand what you're saying and I think that there are a lot of different ways you could walk across all of these lots or drive across them. They are currently hashed. There are places that are directing, you know, all, and correct me if I'm wrong about it, but I think the planning process, all we can do is provide the safest means that we can under the ordinance. So if there was some internal lot-to-lot regulation that, to deal with exactly what you're saying, it would need to be in the ordinance specifically. Now, that's not to say that Jeff isn't trying or has, is not trying to say, well, how can we, hey, we'll repaint the lines. We will help possibly with signage that's agreeable to the board and to an abutter. We will help that way to help with human nature to direct people the best that we can, but ultimately, that's what we can do, the best that we can. And if the ordinance doesn't have very specific things to dictate that, that's where that analysis kind of stops. And so I think that here, we've designed this to the rule of the law, essentially, to the ordinance. I can't predict, I'm not saying that it won't happen or that it will happen and I'm not trying to weasel my way out of that answer, but I can't predict how many cars are going to be on and off and what the residents are going to do and God forbid that there's some other pandemic. I don't, I don't know how many cars will be there, but the ordinance dictates how we approach this and we've reduced the seat count in order to, listening to the abutters, I did that on, quote-unquote, "on my feet" here with that motion. So we, I listened to you all, to the board, and then I listened to the abutters and Jeff and I spoke and we reduced the seat count to try to placate or to try to make this more amenable to everyone, to say, okay, we're not going to try to use what we believe is our right. I still believe, and I don't believe that Mr. Hilson or Mr. Fay here are in disagreement, I believe that we have parking rights on the Margarita's lot and on the Bank Prov lot. And so in addition to ingress and knee dress, but we don't need to use those parking spots to comply with the ordinance and I think that legally, that was what the argument was. So we've obviated that now and we comply with the ordinance in full. The easement issue and the possible disagreement between the parties is a private legal matter that would need to be litigated outside of this process, but it should not bear on an approval of an application that fully complies with. If the ordinance said something and addressed this specifically and we were not dealing with that, that might be subject, you know, grounds for denial. But right now, the easements are a private matter and again, we comply. And so, and we're trying to comply in good faith. The design and what we're trying to do was extremely agonizingly planned and thought out in good faith. Mr. Kelly truly is trying to create a nice building, a nice structure and improve that lot and I do think that this does that. Again, while complying with the ordinance. And we did try to work with the abutters. We're still willing to speak with them. My objection to a continuance has nothing to do with Mr. Kelly's willingness to continue speaking with them. I do think there is a way for all the parties to talk through some of these issues, but it should not temper an approval this evening based on a fully compliant application, in my opinion.
I disagree with that.
I'm going to pull it back to the board.
Yeah.
I think we need to deliberate for a little bit.
Yeah. And we may need counsel to help us.
We might. So I'm going to just throw my opinion on this. If we don't think someone has proper access or we're not convinced that they do or we have a doubt in our mind, I would not call it a complying application. An application is demonstrating parking at a property, at an area of their land that they cannot get to without going over an abutter and we're not convinced that they have the right easement to do that, it's not a complete application, in my opinion.
I agree.
I agree.
Or it's in doubt. So I find it troubling, listening to the number of legal opinions about the easements that we've heard and I actually do some of this stuff. So, you know, it, you can certainly hire an attorney to argue any position, but they don't generally argue easements in a way that is not what they believe. So I have definite questions about, that I, I feel like they're unresolved.
Yeah, they are.
So I'm not sure how the board's feeling about that. That's why I brought up the easements earlier. I think at the crux of it, we can talk about a tree, a retaining wall, what the retail uses on the bottom. You got to recognize, one thing I'll say, the mund, the intent of the mund is to reduce parking requirements. So you got to bear that in mind when you're grilling an applicant about, well, you're going to make parking somewhere else? Well, that's what the mund is, guys. So the mund is trying not to say, hey, you're going to try to do this use, you need 50 parking spots on your lot. That's not what the mund's about. So we got to recognize that. My issue is the access question and it's not that I haven't heard strong arguments, but I've heard them from differing opinions and I, I, I'm not convinced either way, frankly. And I think it is a critical issue. It's the critical issue for me.
It is. And can I just follow up with something you just said?
Please.
Some of the, the no parking requirements have been downtown where we have public parking lots.
Sure.
Right? Or in neighborhoods where people can park on the sides of the streets. This is not the case here, which means that they would be using the easement that we've been hearing about from the beginning of the application.
Sure.
So we, we're bouncing all over the place with whether the easement is needed, if it's legal, if it's, I, we. legal, if it's, I, I'll re- repeat what I said earlier. I think the easement issue, I really would have liked to have seen this already ironed out before they came here.
It has to be.
I mean, yeah, especially, and then the McLean Manor, part of it too, is really troubling to me.
Right.
So, again, I just repeated that a second time.
Yeah, no, it's, well, you listened to another hour of testimony, so it's where you're at, right?
Right, exactly. So.
I'm simply not comfortable with the easement situation. And I, I think we need to talk to our own counsel.
Carol, we're probably coming up against a timeline issue.
No.
You are, in two days.
Yeah. So we have to ask for more time from the applicant, which they can voluntarily offer, or do something this evening.
If we vote no.
Vote no is a vote no. I mean, you can vote. That's, they can, we can actually, I, the floor is open amongst the board for any motion anybody wants to make at this point.
I'd like to, if we could first ask the applicant about extending some time here.
Go for it.
Are you?
I would need a two-minute recess to speak on my client outside. If that's okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I don't have a timeframe in mind. Does anyone?
Well, if we're asking for more time, I don't know if we're supposed to talk when he's on recess or not.
Oh, well, you didn't, you didn't put us in recess. That's why I asked the question.
So.
Thirty days.
If we're going to ask for more time, which we just inquired about,
Mm-hmm.
we need to use that time. So I would suggest that we are saying that we probably want to get a legal opinion from a town representative about this legal matter regarding parking and easements in this specific situation.
So are you thinking, two weeks is the 25th or the October?
I think we probably need a month.
I've talked, okay, so that would be the 23rd of October?
I think so.
Okay. In case they, I just wanted to
Yeah.
Be able to go with it.
Yep.
Okay.
Does that make sense to the rest of the board?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do need to get.
If we want to extend it, we need to get something done during that time. That's right.
Yeah, that's right. In fairness to all parties, right? I don't like going this long at all.
Acting, planning, or third person. Do you think that's good?
I think so.
I have to pick up the date.
23rd of October.
Yeah, I think it was.
October 23rd.
Yes.
Which is a little more than a month.
What's the decision?
Have any load on?
We would, we would vote to continue depending on the feedback we get, or if they don't want to, they force a vote.
Mr. Chair.
Which they can probably see where the votes go.
Would you like to hand out back, or would you like me to give it to Carol?
Give it to Carol.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
No, it's fine.
So can I just say something before you do?
Sure.
In all fairness to you, we didn't come up with a date until you, you left the room. So we're, what we're asking for is an extension to October 23rd.
October.
Okay.
Oh, did I say October? I'm doing it again.
Is that the next planning meeting?
No.
It's three hours.
Everybody time to.
You go every two weeks. Jeff, is that okay, the 23rd? Okay. So we'd be happy to extend the deadline to the 23rd, so long as the town seeks legal counsel.
Yep.
Because this, this really, and, you know,
That's our reason.
Maybe we shouldn't have done that at the first meeting, you know.
Probably.
It's a
Sure.
You, you need to work hard to resolve your issues.
We don't need to, we don't need to piss back and forth.
No.
Sure, sure.
We don't. You're right.
Yes or no?
Yes.
You want to grant us the time to hear this case, or do you want us to vote?
We would like to grant the time so long as you seek.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep. I think we're just in a tough position. Respect all your work. Respect your legal opinion, for sure, and of your abutters. And we have to weigh a lot of things when we, when we sit on this board. So one of the things is trying to make sound decisions with the information we have. And sometimes, unfortunately, that doesn't resolve as timely as we would like. Because I, for one, will tell you, I really don't like doing this. I do not like doing this at all. I like short meetings if possible, and I like to have few meetings if possible. So I appreciate the extra time. I know it's not without cost.
But we like to do it right.
We do like to do it right.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and hopefully keep you guys out of court on our decisions, too.
I understand. We do, too.
Yeah.
And so, and that's why I submit, I mean, I have, I've been waving around the whole title pa, and we, we did a full-blown title search on the town, giving it to everyone that's asked.
I'm certain you're convinced of your position, as I am certain the other attorneys are too. So that's where we probably need to have another opinion. But one that we would feel is a little bit less biased.
Sure.
So does somebody want to make a motion?
I will. Motion to table, Planning Board Case Number 25-3, to our October 23rd, 2025 Planning Board Meeting at 7:00 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, stained? Thank you for your time. Appreciate your arguments.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, just take half a second. Take care.
Yeah, do any of the kids need to stretch?
They probably need to go home and do their homework.
Thank you. Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you for being.
Take care, sir.
Good night, sir.
I don't know. Couldn't tell you. I can't read from here. It's taking one second for you. Just giving you a breath. Let the room clear. I think everybody's out. Okay?
You can see one now. I'm 82 years old and paper is still king.
Yeah.
I'm a little bit younger and I agree with you. All right. So next on our agenda is the application of the Exeter Presbyterian Church for site plan review of the proposed construction of an additional building, parking, and associated site improvements on the property located at 73 Winter Street. The subject property is located in the C1 Central Area Commercial Zoning District, Tax Map Parcel Number 73-143, Planning Board Case Number 25-6. Carol, is this ready to be heard?
It is.
Thank you.
Yes.
Turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Paige Libby with Jones &amp; Beach. Here with me tonight also is Skip Phelps from Exeter Presbyterian Church. We do also have some other folks in the room. Of course, I can't introduce everyone, but from the Trail Life Group, as well as the American Heritage Group, who are, meet at the church regularly. So again, for the record, this is 73 Winter Street. It's map 73, Lot 143, and it is in the C1 zone. So this, this building has been home to the Presbyterian Church for many years now. They have about 200 seats in the church, a little bit less. But currently, the building serves both as the sanctuary for the church, as well as the fellowship hall. So it's a little bit inconvenient for them because they regularly have to move chairs around to create space for meals and events and things like that, and then put the seats back in order to have it serve as, as their sanctuary as well. There are currently 26 parking spaces on site. And they do have some overflow parking across the street, which is public parking, as well as at the cemetery. And then they also do have an agreement currently in place with Shooters, which is next door behind them here, where they park during overflow, you know, Christmas Eve or things like that. So what we're proposing here, I'll flip over to Sheet C2 on the plan set, is to add in addition to the back of the building, just over 5,000 square feet, which will serve as their sanctuary. And then the existing structure will then just be the fellowship hall. So they'll have two separate spaces. It'll be much more convenient. They won't have to keep moving chairs around. But they're not actually proposing to expand their parish at all. It's really just to make the space more convenient. They're not looking to add members. They currently have around 200 seats, and the proposed church will be also 200 seats. So with this expansion of the building, it takes up where the parking space was, or the parking lot, I should say. So we are adding some parking around the back with an access aisle. This will all be two-way access, and then we're maintaining the current exit aisle on the left-hand side of the building as well. So that's only about 11 feet wide. But again, they can come and go through this main entrance as well. With the proposed parking, some of it will be constructed of porous pavers in order to stay under the impervious surface requirements in the C1 zone. And then something to note, too, in the back of the property, so right here along the proposed edge of the parking lot, there's a small area that's currently being leased by Shooters and has been for many years. Skip could probably speak more to the details of that. But they have a patio back there that's, that they use. And so we're going to maintain that and only build our parking lot up to the stockade fence so that they can continue to utilize that space. They've been good neighbors over the years. The church uses their dumpster, and then Rob also plows for them. So they've been, they've had a good relationship over the years. And part of our proposal is to formalize that agreement with an easement so that the church can utilize his parking during their overflow. And they'll continue to obviously lease that space to Rob. One thing also on the site plan, we are proposing to construct, there's currently a chain-link fence along the western property line. So we're proposing to replace that with a stockade fence because we're getting a little bit closer to the property line on that side with the proposed parking. And that's just because we're trying to meet the town's ordinance in relation to the aisle width, as well as the size of the parking spaces. Flipping over to Sheet C3, which is our grading and drainage plan.
Ms. Libby, one interruption. It's been pointed out to me that I failed to open the case, so let me just make sure we're open.
Okay. That would be good.
So we're going to open the case. You guys want to vote on it?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, stained? Okay, we're open.
We start over again.
Don't start over again. Don't start over again.
And do you want to ask Carol if she has any comments?
I did that, I think.
Did you?
Yeah, yeah.
You did, okay.
He did ask if he was ready.
Okay.
Unless you have anything else, Carol, that you want to throw out right now.
They came in.
Excuse me. The only thing, at some point, you will vote on this, they, they had requested two waivers. And one of them is for, to waive the requirement for high-intensity soil survey, and the other is, which we've seen before, this grading within five feet of a property line. So the high-intensity soil survey request, that relates to whether the application is complete. So when you take a vote at some point, you want to make sure that you make a decision on, on that. I mean, you can still hear this, but that does affect whether or not the application is technically complete. And then the, the grading waiver, that would be part of your deliberation.
Yeah. Great. Thank you. I mean, I think typically we wait on the hiss, the high-intensity soil waiver request until after the presentation.
You'd like to know the history of the
Right, exactly. Carry on.
Okay, thank you. So on to Sheet C3 of the plan set, which is the grading and drainage plan. So the porous pavers that we're proposing will double as the stormwater management. So the grading has been designed so that the parking lot flows to those areas and will, will be able to be infiltrated.
You're good.
We did do test pits on site, as well as infiltration testing, which I'll speak more to when we get into the waiver request as well. So that's that. The utility plan is Sheet C4. So some of these details are still being worked out a little bit with DPW, just because there, some of the existing utilities on site are unknown. But we are proposing to bring new utilities to the new building. The existing utility services for the existing building will remain, but will tie the existing building into the water coming from the new building. And the new section of the building will be sprinklered. Sheet L1 of the plan set, this is the proposed lighting plan. So we're proposing some lighting around the building, just as wall packs for security lighting. And then we do have one light pole located toward the rear of the site, which will light up the rear parking aisle. We did place it so that it wouldn't impact the parking area, or, sorry, the patio area at Shooters at Rob's request. We do have a landscaping plan as well, so we're proposing some additional plantings around the front of the building, at the entrance, as well as the connection to the Shooters parking lot. And then we do have a couple of small landscape islands where we'll add some plantings. And then, of course, the pavers themselves will be decorative, so that'll add a nice feature to the site. And then again, I'll speak to the waivers. So the first one that Carol had mentioned was for the high-intensity soil survey. The reason we requested that is because much of the site is currently developed and impervious. So these types of soils basically just get mapped as urban land when you do a site-specific soil survey. And also because the, the purpose of the soil map is really just to determine what the hydrologic soil group is that's used for drainage modeling. So with the site being mostly impervious, it's really already modeled as the same, what's called a curve number, no matter what the soil type is. So it really wouldn't have any impact on our drainage model if we did the site-specific soil mapping. So that's the reason why we've included it in the request. And then additionally, we did test pits on site, and we also did infiltration testing on site. So we have a good idea of the soils anyway, without even having to do that, that mapping. And then secondly, the other waiver was for grading within five feet of the property line. I believe this side is the closest, and we're about three feet from the property line with the proposed parking lot. So we have very little space for grading. But that being said, it's staying pretty close to at existing grade. So there won't be a whole lot of grade change between, between the parking lot and the abutters' property. And then I do also have, we have the architecturals here. Doug Green is also here. If you have questions on the building with Port City Design, he is the architect. So we can answer any questions you might have on the architecturals as well. Anything, Ed? Okay. We can't, we can answer any questions. I think one or two of the group leaders wanted to speak, but I don't know if you want them to do that now or during the public hearing.
No, probably during the public hearing.
Okay.
So any specific questions for the applicant right now?
I would just like to know the status of the deed. We got a draft deed in our packet, but it's unsigned.
Yes, the deed for the easement?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so it's not been recorded. We wanted to make sure that you were okay with it.
Okay, so you're waiting for us to?
Yeah, I mean, if you, we just wanted to make sure that you weren't going to have changes, you know, things that you wanted to see on it before it was executed.
Okay, so we can do it as a condition down the road if you need to.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And I would be interested in a sidewalk.
Oh, you would?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, there goes your one and done.
I thought this would be my first one.
I'm more bothered. If you wanted one, you say yes. I'm not the only one.
I definitely want a sidewalk.
I'm very familiar with a site.
Yes, sometimes it is.
I'm not. It's been years, sorry.
Has it?
Yeah, it's been a long time since I've been there.
Okay. Can't deny the right to look at it.
Yeah.
So I, I would say, in that vein, we should probably get that scheduled. If we're talking about a sidewalk, then that's probably the immediate order of business.
I would say so, yeah.
One other question?
Well, there'll be many more questions. We're not closing the hearing. You'll get your chance, Sam, I promise. But let's schedule a sidewalk. So we
I'm in October again. Jeez.
We could probably, is there room on the agenda at the next hearing?
There, yes.
On the 25th?
Yes.
Okay.
So my thought would be, this is a, in my opinion, a pretty straightforward application. Try to get them back here if they're available for the 25th for the next hearing. Would you ma, and we're not, we're not there yet, I'm jumping the gun, but I'm trying to make sure we get the sidewalk properly scheduled.
Yeah.
I don't want a sidewalk in October if we have another hearing in September that you might be able to come to, too.
I am booked on the 25th, but I could have somebody else go to one of the two meetings, so we can, we can keep the 25th.
Okay. All right. So sidewalk before the 25th, then?
Or on that morning.
Or on that morning. Whatever works for you. Whatever works for you.
It's last at 8 o'clock before I can, I go to work. I'm fine.
That morning for the sitewalk?
Yeah, she can't, okay. No, it's okay.
I just realized I can't.
Monday morning, I can't.
Actually, I'm sorry. I'm gonna, can't, I have a meeting that morning. I'm gonna cancel it.
Okay, so we're back to the 25th and the morning.
I'll change my schedule.
I'll be out of town.
At 8:00 AM? You'll be out of town?
Yeah, but that's fine.
You sure?
I trust you.
Sam, there's two weeks between now and then. I bet if you asked the applicant, they would allow you to walk the property ahead of time. And I've done that many times.
Yes.
Pretty familiar with it. Are you? Yeah.
You are? Okay.
Yeah. So did you get it scheduled?
Is everyone okay for the 25th at 8:00 AM? September 25th.
Sounds like it.
We've got parking spots.
There is parking there.
Park at the old KFC and walk over.
We'll go back to the cemetery. We can go to Shooters. It's early enough in the morning.
Yeah, I was gonna say, go bowl a couple of drinks.
All right, so we got our sitewalk scheduled. Let's continue this hearing.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Sam.
Just one thought that I'll throw out to really everyone in the room. In the CIP, there's plans to extend the sidewalk on Railroad Street to join Winter Street to Front Street. And I just hoping that we're coordinating so that we don't end up with a sidewalk that stops 20 feet short of the church or something wasn't, the dots weren't connected.
There actually is sidewalk.
The sidewalk's there.
Okay.
Along Winter Street?
Yeah.
I don't know if that's changing as part of... I mean, we can certainly ask.
Check with DPW. There's gonna be a bump out there. And the CIP, the other part is the other end. On the Front Street, I'm sorry. Yes, Front Street side, where they're talking about reconfiguring. But there is going to be a bump out. It's already been approved.
Okay.
At the end of Columbus.
Okay. Yeah, I think that probably doesn't impact us, but we'll reach out.
Just double check.
We've been coordinating with them on the utilities, so we can do that.
Thank you.
Anything, Vernon? You wanna hear from the group leaders? They've been here a while. All right, let's hear from any abutters or group leaders that would like to speak at our hearing.
And anyone that's maybe not tall enough to do the mic, they can either take the mic down or we can hand them a table one, okay?
Hello, my name is Brandy Small. My family and I have been in Exeter for about 10 years. We love this community. The kids participated in many of the rec programs when they were younger. And they both participate with Extra Youth Across every year. But they were really missing a program that would engage them and teach them in a well-rounded sort of way. Then we found H Street, G, and Trail Life at the Exeter Presbyterian Church. It has been so wonderful for the kids. After the first year, I volunteered to help out. It has been really great to see the kids learn and grow. We have groups learning American Sign Language, basketball, fire safety, pen and paper arts, needle crafts, hiking, camping, fire safety, wilderness safety. Various groups have learned karate, dancing, rocketry, sewing, knot-tying, and the list goes on and on. It is such a well-rounded program for growth. Field trips have been taken to the Boston Museum of Science, overnight campouts at the USS Massachusetts. They've taken trips to the Boston Freedom Trail and the USS Constitution, just to name a few. Also, the dues are very nominal. They're about $140 per year per child, with just small fees for trips that are usually subsidized by the church, making it very cost-effective for lower-income families. Also, cost is never a barrier as the Exeter Presbyterian Church is very generous with scholarships and assistance for those in need. These programs are such a gift to the community, and we can't afford to lose them. As you can see of everyone here, they're very, very beloved programs. Our policy has always been to never turn kids away. But if EPC is unable to build this addition, we will have to do just that. Last year, we had 80 kids growing, learning, and thriving with these programs. It is essential for program growth for the expansion to become a reality. So EPS is willing to build it for us. We only ask that you approve their plans to do so so that we may continue to offer these life-changing programs to our youth. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was easy.
All that work on the lanes you've been doing.
Thank you. I'm Robert Fekara, celebrating my 40th year of owning the Exeter Bowling Lanes and Shooters Pub or Shooters. My relationship with the church has been fantastic. You know, the folks that run the church are just very down-to-earth, high-integrity people. I know the programs that they run because I can see them from where I am all day long. And I've known Pastor McGee for a long time, and I know him personally. And there is more need for space, not only for moving chairs around within the building, but this is a church. And they're operating in a very old schoolhouse. I think they deserve to look like a church. Our relationship has been great as far as if either one of us need anything. And we continue, we plan on continuing that relationship as far as the parking goes. I appreciate the fact that if you've ever been in the beer garden behind the pub, it has ambient lighting and things like that. And the last thing we want is a big floodlight. And it took half of the sentence for them to say, you know what, we're gonna make sure that doesn't happen. And that's the relationship that I think they have with the community as well. This is fantastic to see, you know, kids showing up and getting the exposure to things like this, but the support. So I just wanna say that, you know, we are fully in favor of the expansion. And we plan on continuing that relationship with them. So we're grateful for that. So best of luck, and I vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it, unless you need to hear more from us. That pretty well sums up where we are.
Okay.
This guy in the front seat wants to get up real quick. Give him a microphone.
They have gotten two lessons tonight here.
Public speaking is a very large fear for a lot of people. It's very high. So if you're feeling that anxiety, it's understandable. But I would highly recommend you try to get opportunities, maybe within your groups, to speak because it really is a skill. And it's something that doesn't necessarily happen right away. I used to be petrified. Now you can't shut me up, so... That was a long time ago, but...
I used to be the opposite. With age, it went the other way.
So we talked about a sitewalk. We can continue the hearing, to work through this hearing. I think everything's in favor. I think we can't really talk about hiss and the waivers that are requested unless we... If we're gonna do a sitewalk, those are pretty relevant issues. So I'm looking for a motion.
So to table until 7 o'clock at the next meeting? Let me put my glasses on, sorry. I wrote a note, but... So I move that we're going to table Planning Board Case 25-6 to our September 25, 2025, meeting at 7:00 PM.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed or abstentions? See you in a couple of weeks.
I should've asked, do you want anything staked out for the sitewalk? Sorry.
I don't, I don't know what Gwen's looking for. I need to visually see your burms on the side and where you're asking for the...
The pavers.
The pavers, and you wanna go from 5 to 3.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Yeah. Sorry, it's getting...
You kinda wanna walk it?
I just need to walk it, probably 10 minutes, and I'll be fine. I just feel more comfortable.
We'll offer to open the building, and you can see why we need to do this. That was the Knights of Columbus building.
And I've been in it, was it years ago? Probably 30 or more years ago.
Yeah, well, it has not changed.
That's why I'm saying, I don't wanna put you to any trouble. I probably can shake the offer if anyone else wants to see, but yeah.
The church started 30 years ago as a church plant. And we seem to have remained in that status as a church plant. We're now trying to grow out of it. 30 years later, it's time to grow out of that, build a sanctuary, and be able to serve us.
I was driving by there about a week and a half ago, wondering if anything was going to happen with that building to make it look more like a church. And then you showed up in our packet, so...
If you look, it'll look like a church. In fact, this young man right here was the one that when he first saw this, he said, "Is it gonna have a steeple?" And he said, "Nip for you, it will have a steeple."
See? Ask and you receive.
So we will see you. Thank you all for coming. We still have a meeting going on. So I know we're gonna get really lonely in a few seconds.
Thank you for bringing the kids tonight.
Absolutely.
And now I have to look up and see what Trail Life...
I'm a trail master for Trail Life.
Oh, great.
And so I wanted the guys to see what's going on.
Sure.
It's exciting.
Yeah.
Absolutely, I appreciate it.
It's exciting.
Yeah.
Thanks for what you're doing.
No, absolutely.
Appreciate that. Yeah, take care, folks. Thanks for coming out. Good to see you. Take care of yourself.
Thank you. It was nice to meet you.
Hi.
I can shake hands. Just saying hi. All right. So we're gonna move on our agenda here. Master Plan discussion. Marty, just wanna really briefly update the board.
So on the, the Master Plan Committee, Aaron, John, and I, we met and talked briefly, I don't know, a few days ago. And I followed up with Scott Vogel at the Rockingham Planning Commission to find out where they were on the work that they have ongoing. Things have slowed down, obviously, because they haven't been around. And so they haven't done much since June. They need to be setting up, there's gonna be a community meeting. They're putting together a focus group that had, to get businesses on the group, residents. And they had, they also had done some interviews with staff. And those, I think, were done in June. But they haven't done much else as far as reaching out to the businesses and to residents and get that focus group up. They were supposed to get all this work done by the end of the year. I've asked Scott to look at the schedule and see if that's, you know, if that's even doable. I suspect he's gonna do that. I suspect it's not. And I, he tells me that they, you know, we're gonna meet, our committee, we're gonna set up a time to meet with Scott, go over the details of those, and get that thing up and running. So I suspect it's probably not gonna be finished by the end of the year, but it'll be something that'll fall into the next year. But I don't know that there's any emergency or any reason that that's gonna be a problem, unless somebody can tell me otherwise.
And then, Carol, do you have anything on land use regulation review, field modifications, or bond end, or letter credit reductions and releases?
As far as the land use regulations go, I think there'll be just a few little tweaks to your ordinance and your subdivision regulations from recent legislation. Nothing really significant. And the bond reduction requests that we'd had for 78 Linden, we haven't heard back from the HOA. We did send them information, I mentioned last time, about the procedure. And we have not heard from them. So that's still sort of on hold.
Okay, thank you. I would just say, in terms of the Master Plan part, Dave Sharple's was the driving ship in our committee. And we were really there to assist him. And he really was hugely involved. So we're trying to work our way through that. Marty's taking a leadership position, which is very helpful. And then, other than that, anybody wanna... Oh, go ahead.
One thing, the Select Board at our last meeting accepted sadly Pete Cameron's resignation. So we can fill that...
Seat.
Seat with, from an, with an alternate.
Okay.
Do you wanna do that, or do you wanna wait until the next meeting?
I think, well, who are the alternates now?
We have Marty.
Uh-oh, you guys wanna arm wrestle? What are we doing?
Well, no, it should go by seniority.
Mud match right out here?
Marty's taking a leadership position.
I'd much rather see some heavy competition here.
Not tonight, no.
So you're just gonna defer like that?
Absolutely.
Aw, man.
Is that, so Marty, are you interested in taking a full voting member?
All right. Do we vote for that?
I'm not sure, but let's do it just in case.
Yeah, that makes sense. All right. So does somebody wanna nominate Marty for a regular member position?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Anybody wanna slander him a little bit, Sam?
No.
No? Aw, jeez. Pretty unexciting.
Just as your willingness.
Lot easier than our normal politics. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstained?
Should I abstain?
Yeah. Ananamous, unanimous, Marty. You're in.
Mr. Acting Chair, you'll just have to write a letter to the Select Board.
Okay.
And let them know that the board is recommending that Marty take the full-time position.
Will do.
If you could do it maybe tomorrow. I'm not sure if they can add it, but we have a meeting Monday.
Oh, you do? Okay.
Yeah.
Either just leave Lang a note to do it.
Yeah.
The packet's already done, but if Nico can get it...
If you have a chance to add it?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Does that need to be a signed letter?
It does. It does.
Okay. All right, that makes it a little bit harder, then I have to work a little harder for that.
I think Barb probably has a template.
Yeah.
She does.
All right.
If you could send that to Melissa Roy, just because Pam McAvoy is off tomorrow, there is a temp, but that way we're sure to get it moving.
Melissa's on those.
Melissa Mc, Melissa Roy, you could send it to her, our acting town manager, or to...
Why send it to Barb, too?
Well, Barb will help him.
Yeah.
She should get it to the right place.
Okay, I'm still looking for a motion.
Motion to adjourn? Second?
So moved. Done. Lang never even asks. He always kinda like winks at me.
I know. And look at that, everyone did great, well, look at this.
Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.